...give their final stamp of approval and then it will be presented to you in a council meeting for your approval. And then this plan, once approved, will be good for the next five years. We went through this plan, this process, five years ago, and then in 2019, it did expire, and we're hoping to get that done and renewed anytime. Why hazard mitigation? Well, it's essentially a requirement by the federal government. If we don't have a plan in place, then we're not eligible for most federal funding for public infrastructure. So that's the reason why we're here today. It's an important thing. It's basically a wish list for all the public infrastructure that we would like to tackle, but we just don't quite have the funds to get there. So by identifying it, we are eligible to go after federal funding. And if we were to have a natural or man-made disaster, we can replace that public infrastructure, this damage with the most up-to-date per code and the best rebuild that we possibly can. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to David Grissel. He'll give some history about what we've done to get here to this day, and then he's going to turn it over to Lori Beth. He'll kind of wrap it all up and tell us how the plan came together and what she's done to get it through the state and to FEMA. So with that, David.
Thank you, Chief. Again, I'm David Grissel. I do emergency management for the city of Norman, not a fire guy, but I do belong to the fire department. We do a lot of stuff out in the area, emergency preparedness and talking to the community and dealing with the bigger stuff, tornadoes and things. As the chief said, it happens every five years. And in order to get to the five-year point, we have to start approximately a year, year and a half before the expiration date. And since we are part of the county plan, it's important that you understand it's not just the city of Norman. Every jurisdiction within the city of Cleveland County, with the exception of Oklahoma City and more, are participating in this plan. So the cumulative effect is from the whole county. And in the eyes of FEMA, they kind of like seeing that collaboration between the jurisdictions. We talked about one change, though. In the past, we could say, here are our hazards, tornado, floods, fires, so forth, and they all affect us all kind of in the same way, and they all have the same kind of destruction, and they all are mitigated in the same kind of manner. Well, now we have to be a little more specific. How does that tornado affect the University of Oklahoma? How does that same tornado specifically affect Norman? So now the plan has to address more specifics than it used to, and that's caused some little more thinking to go on. As you can see on the slide here, our current plan is undergoing updates, as the chief mentioned. One of the unique things of the last time, and I believe Councilman Holman was the only current one, was the last time we did this. One of the things that we learned from the last time, when you do a plan like this, you always have to take public input, right? Well, what we normally do, we take and we put in public notice where the place that we're going to have the input, we file it with the county, and we put it on our door out here, and then we hold the meeting, and nobody shows up. Right? Well, that's what FEMA saw also, and they were holding our plan up last time at one point because of the lack of public input. I'm fortunate to have a lot of volunteers that are also faculty people at the University of Oklahoma. Dr. Amy Gooden is the director of the Public Opinion Learning Lab at the University of Oklahoma, and she got with us and the county, and she helped create a survey. And we did that survey three different ways. Put it in a mailer, through the utility bill, it was on our website. And then the third way is we, during Earth Day last year, we were literally on the ground at Reeves Park with flipboards in hand, and people would get a bag of popcorn, but they had to fill out the survey first. So we made a bigger impact showing more input from our jurisdiction in what they thought about what should be our priorities on mitigation effort. We had, City of Norman had 645 participants in those surveys, and that, I thought, was really, really a good effort. And also, the county did a separate survey, and Lori can address that when she comes up, and they did the same thing throughout the rest of the jurisdiction. We also met with Oklahoma Climatological Society, and I put the word mezzanine out there because most people don't know OCS. They don't know that the mezzanine is ran by Oklahoma Climatological Society, which is a state agency. That's also who runs OK First, the program that we use for during severe weather operations. We sat down with them and asked them to help us provide data, graphs, charts, information concerning some of the mitigation issues such as severe weather. And they were a great partner in this effort. And the dates, you can see, that was back in January of 2018 is when we had that meeting. And then we sat down with the state coordination team, or hazard mitigation coordination team. I will say, at the state office over the years, they've also gotten smarter, and their review process has become better and better. So we started off the process with the liaison team working hand-in-hand with them, making sure that we were going down the direction that they were getting from FEMA and rewriting this plan. So that was a key element there. And then we held an inner-city meeting here on March 7th. We got input from the different departments and staff on their projects that they'd like to see in the plan. And then again, we held a county-wide meeting for all the jurisdictions to come together and discuss mitigation efforts in the whole jurisdiction. As the chief said, we are working hand-in-hand with the state. The plan was handed off to the state, and it was approved at their level. They got it to where Lori is driving the train on actually writing the plan. So they worked together and got it to where they felt good about sending it to FEMA, they sent it off to FEMA, and as the chief has already mentioned, it's been in the hands of FEMA for review for several months now. And the problem that really happens there is, you know, this region's six, five states, and they only have three or four plan reviewers. So you hit that brick wall of bureaucracy in just time. And they have been reviewing our plan, and I really don't know the status. I know that it's pending approval right now. At least they're working on it and got their hands on it. So if you don't have any questions regarding those issues, then I'll ask Lori to come up and talk about the summary of the effort at the county.
Appreciate you all taking time to visit with us this evening. I'm Lori Beth Marshall and the deputy director at Cleveland County, as already was mentioned. And here are some of the highlights of the hazard mitigation plan. Basically, it's a condensed version of what was produced for the 2014 to 2019 plan. So it has the same hazards. You know, the way tornadoes affect us then affects us the same now, so that type of thing is very similar. The goals are the same, and if you happen to look in the digital format, it's in section 4.3. But it covers overarching goals, you know, how are we going to improve resiliency? How are we going to identify and create new action projects over the next few years and implement those? The previous plan was 600 pages long. The current one is around 150 pages. That doesn't mean it has any less, I mean, it has less content, obviously, since it's shorter, but as far as the substance, it's more concise and hopefully much more accessible to each jurisdiction. Because most jurisdictions, as I met individually with them, a lot of people don't take time to read 600 pages of dam failure. That's very unlikely to happen. So hopefully, by bringing it down, it's more accessible to everyone. And there was also some inaccuracies from the previous plan, which have now been corrected. And as David mentioned, public input was definitely an improvement this round. The city of Norman and with Dr. Amy Gooden did an excellent job on that, and I know she put a lot of work into it. The county survey was very brief, since we were a different demographic and we wanted to make it more versatile for the other participating jurisdictions. It was just a very simple five or six-question survey saying, you know, what hazards have you personally experienced in the past five years versus what are you usually afraid of? Because a lot of times, people might say they're more afraid of tornadoes or they're more afraid of earthquakes, but when you get down to it, they may actually experience a wildfire because they live in rural part of the county, or they've experienced drought. And so those, kind of identifying where those differences of perception versus reality are. That way, we can be more effective in our hazard mitigation long-term. And going forward, what I'm hoping will happen is the county will continue to be the driving force of annual updates so that whenever we have a more active storm season, we can identify the repetitive loss areas, we can identify the damaged areas, the flooding, whatever the case may be, so that we can put those updates, when they happen, in the plan, so that when we get to that formal five-year update, it won't take the county as long to get in touch with each jurisdiction. It'll just kind of expedite the process so that when we are in the next round of getting approved with OEM and FEMA, then it's kind of like we just continue business as usual. And I think that's pretty much it. And at any point between the current update and the next one, if the city of Norman wants to, if they've identified a particular project that they think would mitigate flooding or any of the hazards identified in the plan, we can submit an addendum and get it added in between. So we don't have to wait until 2025 to add those projects. They can be added along the way, should that be necessary. And I think that's it.
So along those lines, could it be like the top projects in our Stormwater Master Plan are also in there? But would it require that Imhoff Creek gets damaged for us to fix something with it?
Not necessarily. Councilor Rethan, Dr. Evans would be a better source. And one of the things that drove this meeting and trying to get this moved along was an opportunity for a grant, a hazard mitigation grant through FEMA and/or other federal agencies. And without this plan, we aren't eligible to apply for that. So that's one of the drivers behind this, behind having this adopted, that not only have we identified the needs, but we can maybe get access to grants that we otherwise wouldn't have access to without an adopted plan.
And I guess I could understand why Oklahoma City's not involved, since most of their city limits isn't in Cleveland County, but any rate reason why more is not a part of the county plan?
They were part of the previous one, but they just decided they would like to have their own plan. There wasn't really any reason other than they wanted to write their own plan. So it was finally decided to go off and do their individual one. It doesn't penalize Cleveland County, or it doesn't affect our plan negatively in any way.
The county plan addresses everything that the city of Norman is concerned about?
They don't get tornadoes, so they don't have to worry about it.
Are there any other questions from council members? Councilmember Stan?
Two questions. One, and I haven't looked at it today, but I did skim the thing when it came my way, and there are assessments of likelihood of this or that, and I wonder if that's based on historical information, projections, all of the above? What's the basis for these assessments?
Yes, the, I think it's the Oklahoma Climatological Society or another organization similar to that put together what is abbreviated as the SCIP tool, and it's a Southern Climate, I forget what SCIP stands for, but it's a handbook that has compiled all of the climatological related data, and that was what I used as a jumping off point to survey and find what historical data there was. Now, some of it, as I looked into it for snowfall examples, some of it isn't up to date, up to like 2018 or 2019. So when that's the case, when I put the information into the plan, I'm just very clear about, okay, this is the information that I was able to find. Going forward, we'll keep monitoring those same websites for additional data and just make it clear that we did our due diligence in an effort to find that.
An editorial comment. I obviously went right to flooding. Reading it, I thought, while the information there was okay, it seemed to be very, very general, more superficial than I would have liked, but that's a personal reaction. The second question that I have, some weeks ago, we did a tabletop exercise in disaster preparedness and reaction, and we walked away from that convinced that that's a good idea, and maybe we'll do more of that stuff, particularly for staff. Are we? Have we? Will we?
We will, and with new assets that will be coming online shortly, including the new Emergency Operations Center, the opportunity for us to review and refresh all of our skill sets as it relates to SIMs and NIMS, the Standardized Emergency Management Protocol, great opportunity for additional tabletop exercises with lots of different scenarios.
We're not waiting for the new building on Robinson. We're going to do something sooner?
We can do something absolutely sooner than that.
Editorial again, I would hope so.
Councilwoman Wilson?
I'm kind of, I just now realized that that was attached. I don't know why. That was new knowledge to me, but I'm just sorry that I didn't go through it prior to this. However, is this only addressing weather and climate-type things, or are we looking at this acts of war and other things?
Well, this particular update, as it is, addresses natural hazards only. And that could be something that when we have the next meetings, once we achieve this current FEMA approval, we can certainly discuss with my boss, who's the director of Emergency Management for Cleveland County, George Malden. We can discuss with him and the folks at OEM on the pros and cons of adding things like cybersecurity and hazard materials and, 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 if that's something that people of Cleveland County would like to do. And we can certainly, I mean, that's another opportunity as a whole community, all the jurisdictions in Cleveland County included, that we could do another survey through the city of Norman, we can do another county-wide survey and see.
So the survey determined kind of what direction you're going on the, am I?
The, the surveys that were in this update reflected just the ones that are already identified and did not really influence the direction of those hazards identified, because they were, what I did is just update the 600-page plan.
Okay.
And so.
I see in here dam and Lake Thunderbird emergency action, but I'm curious about wildfires? I'm sure.
Yep, there's a section in there.
And then my other one would be, we are pretty close to Tinker, so acts of war and terrorism might be something that I would want to know a little more about, how we would deal with it.
Well, that's an excellent point. I know it's something that, given the size of the update and trying to bring it up to speed this round, we focused on the natural hazards, since that was kind of voted on.
Probably more likely, hopefully.
And actually, that reminds me, the kickoff meeting that we held back in March 7th, 2018, I believe that's when the committee voted. So that was, all jurisdictions came, the committee voted to focus on these natural hazards, so.
So the committee is the one that guided that direction? Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Bierman?
Kind of related to Councilwoman Wilson's question, this might be for either Chief Foster or Chief King, I'm not sure which. Do we have any kind of action plan for train derailments in particular, considering we have a pretty major railway that runs right through the heart of our city and pretty close to.
We cancel council meetings.
I would hope so.
We have a city emergency plan that would deal with incidents like that. It would be based on the same thing, the same type of action on incident command system. That's how we would set up, and it would be a joint thing, mainly with fire being the lead on it. But yeah, we plan for that, and we do drills on that. You know, in the past, we've had officers that are injured and retired because of chemicals that was on a train derailment.
Yeah, that one has a particular interest to me. I worked on a project in North Dakota specifically related to crude oil train derailments, and North Dakota has been very lucky that the majority of their train derailments and explosions have happened outside of populated areas. However, in Norman, we're very densely populated right near the railroad tracks, and so I'm sure it does nothing but make me feel better to stop extra far back from the crossings when I can, but I do because I, you know, one errant acorn, whatever it, however it happens. So that's something that I would like to make sure that even if it doesn't end up in this particular plan, that we have, that we have some strong action plans in that area in particular, just because of the number of people it can affect.
To add to that, like the chief said, we have the Mercy Operations Plan, and it's a blanket approach to that, and we plug in what department, who is affected by that to come in and handle that. Obviously, you think about hazmat or a fire in that situation, we think about evacuations. That's going to draw in all of us, and then the aftermath, obviously, you know, you're going to do with public works and everybody at that point. So we have that plan in place, and that's sort of a separate plan, but yes, we're ready to go on that and well-versed in our incident command systems and working together in a unified command approach. And then reaching out to our state partners, and obviously, if it's big enough, federal partners, and managing those resources coming in is vital, too, but we're confident in those abilities.
Great, thank you.
I've only seen it happen once, but I think when I was a senior in high school here in Norman, there was a pretty large train derailment just north of Robinson, very close to the mobile home trailer park, it's right there.
It's on Rock Creek, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Most of the train fell onto the west side of the tracks instead of the residential side, but that's really the only major one I can recall, but it just takes one, really. Yeah, okay. Yes, Councilman Petron.
Does this take into account flooding for the river?
It, it does. And kind of along those lines, whenever I was consulting with all of the jurisdictions, I was very careful to, like if the city of Norman brought my, something to my attention, I would try to put it into the plan, like, hey, yes, we're aware of the flooding in this area. I know Kerry helped supply, and Sean helped supply inundation maps so that it was clear that we, as a whole, knew where certain areas that had the potential for damaging inundation should dam fail or there be flooding, that, you know, those areas haven't identified.
Dam failures.
So, guys, that would be part of our floodplain management program, which is embedded in this. It's referenced in this as a member of the National Flood Insurance Program and our floodplain management program with FEMA. The Canadian River would be one of many floodplains that we would manage.
So further than, more than that, I was actually thinking about, you know, like what Tulsa went through this year. I mean, if the rain would have been 100 miles shifted to the, what is that, west?
Yes.
We had a different situation here in Norman from the river. So I was wondering in that, not necessarily floodplain, but just the fact that there's a waterway there.
That's exactly why we're updating the floodplain maps in Ward 3 and 8 for that very purpose, so we have better data to know what 100-year flood would look like and the 500-year flood would look like in terms of impact on Robinson.
So how does that translate to this? Is what I'm.
If I may, it really doesn't, because this isn't a response plan. What this plan is for is pre-disaster or pre-emergency. It's what can we take that scenario that they had in Tulsa? Now, what can, what projects can they do to mitigate that against the next time it floods? This, this plan is not a response plan, although some of what you're doing here is affecting preparedness and response, because you're giving us, the responders, a better opportunity to, to, to respond to that with less of an impact of that disaster or whatever, whatever occurs. So you have to look at this plan well before your response or your preparedness phases.
In which case, he's saying buy flood insurance. And that's why we're updating that.
So the issue with.
But he was exactly right to that point, that we got about a half a million dollars grant to do the map updates on the Canadian River and the 10-mile幅 basin. That came out of the last hazard mitigation plan update that we did. That's why we got that grant. So all of these things do touch, but he's right. We don't get into details about floodplain management or tornado management or fire, fire management necessarily.
And coincidentally, there is a section, I failed to remember what exact one, but you'll see that there's a couple of sections, that there's tables, and it'll have the municipal jurisdictions and a bunch of checkmarks. And that is the capabilities assessment, which points to what Sean and David have both pointed to, is that's where you're going to find your response, and that's where you're going to find some of those nitty-gritty details saying, yes, we have a plan for this, we have a plan for that, or as a case, maybe, maybe you don't, or it's in the works, or whatever the case may be. So certain things like those details are identified in the hazard mitigation plan, but like David said, it's, this itself is not a response for the specific events.
And again, the mention of the IT, mitigation IT and technological things that are happening now and in the past, we greatly enhanced our, our capabilities within the city. Don't work for IT, but I do have an automation background from military. And since Tim Powers come on board, they've made some changes, they've done great things here. And if you didn't know, the current director of Oklahoma Emergency Management was also the cyber guy for the state. So he came down and talked to the area emergency management conferences, and he's putting a big, a big emphasis on that. So once we go through the process and we get the approved plan back, we can easily turn around and identify what is that project? What, something that we can do and accomplish to mitigate either against the river, to the IT, or to the flooding, or another storm shelter program, or whatever. So what is that project, things that we can put our hands on that sustain mitigation efforts for the future? And that's where we can, and that's where she mentioned, that we can easily go back and, and add to the plan later on. Trying to stop a plan in the middle of the process to add three or four more projects just stops the plan in the process and adds more time to it. So those are great things that you're pointing out, and, you know, as you, as you think about those things, write them down, get them to us, we can easily, once we get the plan approved by FEMA, it comes to council, you guys put the stamp on it, we can turn right around. So you have to look at this plan well before your response or your preparedness faces.
In which case, he's saying by flood insurance. And that's why we're updating that.
So the issue with.
To that point here, you're exactly right. We've got about a half a million dollar grant to do the mapping of things down the Canadian River and the 10-mile flat creek basin. That came out of the last hazard mitigation plan update that we did. That's why we got that grant. So all of these things do touch. But he's right. We don't get into details about floodplain management or tornado management or fire, wildfire management necessarily.
And coincidentally, there is a section, I fail to remember what exact one, but you'll see that there's a couple of sections, that there's tables, and it'll have the municipal jurisdictions and a bunch of checkmarks. And that is the capabilities assessment, which points to what Sean and David have both pointed to, is that's where you're going to find your response. And that's where you're going to find some of those nitty-gritty details saying, yes, we have a plan for this, we have a plan for that. Or, as the case may be, maybe you don't, or it's in the works, or whatever the case may be. So certain things like those details are identified in the hazard mitigation plan. But like David said, it's, this itself is not a response for specific events.
And again, the mention of the IT, mitigation IT and technological things that are happening now and in the past. We greatly enhanced our capabilities within the city. Don't work for IT, but I do have an automation background from military. And since Tim Powers come on board, and they've made some changes, they've done great things here. And if you didn't know, the current director of Oklahoma Emergency Management was also the cyber guy for the state. So he came down and talked to the area emergency management conferences, and he's putting a big emphasis on that. So once we go through the process and we get the approved plan back, we can easily turn around and identify what is that project? What, something that we can do and accomplish to mitigate either against the river, to the IT, or to the flooding, or another storm shelter program, or whatever. So what is that project, things that we can put our hands on that sustain mitigation efforts for the future? And that's where she mentioned that we can easily go back and add to the plan later on. Trying to stop a plan in the middle of the process to add three or four more projects just stops the plan in the process and adds more time to it. So those are great things that you're pointing out. And, you know, as you think about those things, write them down, get them to us, we can easily, once we get the plan approved by FEMA, it comes to council. You guys put the stamp on it, we can turn right around and request amendment to the plan and include some of those things that are now prevalent that wasn't prevalent a year and a half ago. So we can handle that very easily.
Wilson?
I guess for me, it just, the realization that this is a mitigation plan and not an action plan changes the conversation. I didn't catch that part.
And that's a, I mean, until I was actually in it, I didn't make that connection either. So I mean, it's a common.
Oh, well, that makes sense.
A common assumption.
Just a footnote, and maybe wishful thinking on my part, but the fact that we're updating engineering design criteria definitely fit, to me anyway, in the prevention category. Things that will prevent potential stormwater issues in the future if we do that right. And so maybe not explicitly mentioned, but that's something that this council has supported, and it's a big deal.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, any other questions, comments? Yes, okay. Well, if that's it, then I will go ahead.
We have a couple more slides.
We've got some more slides.
As we were talking about, and Lori mentioned, we're in the middle of the process. And in the process, the plan has gone through the state, has been seen by FEMA. FEMA has done their due diligence, of course, of, you know, mandatory time that you've got to wait, right? So they've done that, and they've done their thing. And at some point, hopefully within the next few days, maybe a month or so, they're going to kick it, they will kick it back to the state. Very rare that you ever see a plan get approved the first time by FEMA. And that's just natural. You know, things change. Again, different directives come out while the process is going on. So we're going to get it back from FEMA, and we're going to identify what they say we need to fix. And we're going to fix it up real, real nice and pretty for them. Turn around, send it back through the state, send it back to FEMA, and hopefully that will, that will be all we have to do. And then once FEMA is satisfied, another change, if Councilman Holman may remember, last time FEMA would not even look at the plan unless the council approved the plan first. So we approved the plan, then sent it to state, then sent it to FEMA. Then they would red-mark it all up and send it back to the state and send it back to us. Council had to reapprove the plan. And then we did that five times, six times. So this time, thankfully, we don't have to do that. So what happens now is once we get any changes that they've identified, FEMA will conditionally approve the plan. They will send it us back and say, your plan is approved based on your local jurisdiction officiating body. Sends us back a letter, says, yeah, we approved the plan. And then they will send us a formal letter of approval. And then we just went through about the first three bullets there. Well, we went through all them bullets, didn't we?
In my experience, it is pretty difficult to go through the FEMA process on most anything. It can take several years often. And lots of acronyms, like CLOMER and.
And you have different directives.
Letter of map revision.
600-page document that we had last time. FEMA had this need for information, just a lot of information. It didn't really have a lot of mitigation project emphasis, but a lot of information that they kept wanting more and more and more. Demographics and geographics, and that's why a plan made to identify projects to mitigate hazards in your area went to from a couple of hundred pages to 600 pages. And now we have new FEMA director, new regional directors, new guidance. Thank God, they know how to make it a little bit smaller plan. So, and with that, now, at the end of the presentation, and we do appreciate your time this evening. And do you have any more questions?
Okay, all right. I think that's it. Appreciate you coming out. Thanks for the presentation. Anything else, Chief King?
No, thank you all for attending tonight. I just wanted to brief you before you saw it.
So when is this on our agenda?
As soon as we get back from FEMA. It could be any day.
Oh, so we're not doing council first this time?
No, we'll get that final approval from them, no any minor changes, and then you'll see that.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned, then. Thank you.
If you do anything between now and the time.